Okay, I'm going to start off with our Nat land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood Planning Commission acknowledges that the land on which we gather, and that is currently known as the city of West Hollywood, is the occupied unceded seized territory of the Gabarino Tongva and Gabarino Kich peoples. This planning commission meeting is being live broadcast and teleconferenced on the city's website, and as a courtesy, this meeting is also available on the city's YouTube channel at youtube.com/WeHoTV and on Roku, Apple TV, Fire TV, and Android TV. You may call in to make a comment, and you may also listen to this meeting by dialing Meeting ID number 843-5433-7789, and then press the pound sign. I'd like to call this meeting for the planning commission, City of West Hollywood, to order at September 7, 2023 at 6:32, and pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Commissioner Matos. Thank you. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also want to remind everybody in council chambers, when they come up to the podium, and for us, the commissioners, please speak into your mic. People on the Zoom platform are having a hard time understanding and hearing what we're saying, so let's just be conscious of that as we move forward. Item two, pledge, sorry, item three, roll call.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Commissioner Matos.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Wa.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Copeland.
Here.
Vice Chair Lombardi.
Present.
Chair Carvalero.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Great. Approval of the agenda? Do we have any changes to the agenda that we need to note?
I would move approval, Chair.
And we have a second?
Moved by Commissioner Matos, seconded by Commissioner Edwards. And the agenda is approved as presented for Thursday, September 7, 2023.
And item five now, approval of the meeting minutes from August 17, 2023. Are there any corrections that we need to note?
Chair Staff does have a couple minor corrections, grammatical errors. Page two, under nine A, the second sentence where it says "commercial building and construction", we're going to strike out the word "and," A-N, and replace it with "of." And then on page three, under nine B, the main text where it says "dwelling lease terms for condominiums and single," we're going to add "family dwellings."
Great.
And that's all Staff has at this time.
Thank you.
Yes. They move approval as amended.
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, who, who, David, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Greg Wa, seconded by Commissioner Matos. And the minutes for August 17, 2023 are approved as amended unanimously.
Thank you. Item six, public comments. David, do we have any public comments?
Chair, we do have one in the council chambers. If there is anybody on the Zoom platform that would like to make a general public comment, please star nine for me at this time, and we'll give you three minutes to speak. We'll take the council chambers first. Our first speaker will be Chad. Chad, you have three minutes. Just state your name and city of residence.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroeger. Whoa. What up, council? My name is Chad Kroeger. Council, our country used to feed on wheat cereals and brew. Now we feed on the misery of others. We pick on people for their mistakes, which is so not chill, like Hunter Biden. This guy's been through a ton, but does he need ridicule, or does he just need some good bros to point him in the right direction? I have a ton of buddies like Hunter Biden, guys with good motors to party who need to rein it in with foreign investment and hookers. I mean, yeah, he's a douche, but won't we all be given the opportunity? So, yeah, like, maybe he should go to jail, but like, why make fun of him? Like, just let him go to jail, hopefully he learns to pay his taxes, and then when he gets out, let's throw him a freaking rager. Uh, and this is not partisan, I want the same outcome for Republican leaders' kids, too. Justice, yes, but schadenfreude, no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we do have one on Zoom, so I'll turn that over to Joe.
Okay.
Hello, Commissioner. We do have one speaker. It is Lynn Russell. Please, Lynn, go ahead and star six to unmute yourself, and you are ready. Go ahead.
Lynn Russell, West Hollywood. Good evening, Chair Carvalero and fellow commissioners. I'd like to offer a simple postmortem on the failed Temple Bethel appeal. Why did it fail? Pure and simply because the city council members had no frame of reference for or the dynamic involved in a request for continuance, which I personally well-understood of the residents. After obtaining 100 signatures to avoid paying a sizable fee, the appeal was purposely narrow as it was about flawed procedures, not the nitty-gritty about the architect congregation and so forth. City council members were apparently uninformed about their basic tool and the mechanics of the process. An alternative or an addition to the appeal could have been to personally finance another historic resources assessment. Then there would have been dueling historic resources assessments, also left in the hands of the city council, where they likewise have no expertise. They may have depended upon the brief undocumented opinion of its historic consultant, who in my personal opinion in the past years was unable to differentiate between a colonial revival and a Dutch colonial structure. It's now too late for that. Several previously misidentified structures are gone, and now so is the consultant. So we're back to square one. This is exactly what I presented to the commissioners here 10 months ago after detecting serious flaws in the staff report, which were further confirmed then by the principal of the firm that conducted the survey. After I spoke, your former chair stated that you should trust the staff because they are professionals. Well, what if they were wrong? Actually, they were wrong. After the appeal was filed, the survey consultants came up with an expedited assessment, unbelievably using some of my own findings to support their memorandum. Incidentally, one block south of the Temple Bethel on Crescent Heights at 1201 St. Villa Italia, same architect, which has been designated as a local historic landmark. While I'm not a certified architectural historian, I do know my stuff because my business and reputation depend on not only an aesthetic, but all aspects of my discipline. Should the final alternative be to file a suit against the city? This has all been avoidable, but took many hours, and I refer to it as my non-paying client's civic responsibility. At the last meeting, your chairman graciously requested that an item pertaining to a continuance be addressed. City attorney Rosen made a few comments, and since then, letters to him and conversation with him have unbelievably stalled. This simply takes crafting the words and steps for such a procedure and its granting, so it is understandable by the commissioners and the city council and the public. Sooner than later would be best. I implore the commissioners and the city attorney that time to do something is when you think of it. Thank you so much.
And Chair, that is our last public speaker on the Zoom platform.
Thank you. Do we have a director's report?
Good evening. I will be giving the director's report this evening. I'm acting in the meantime until our new, or for this week, we have, we are expecting our new director to be starting on September 18, which I think that you were made aware of last week. His name is Nick Marisich, and so we're looking forward to him coming in. I wanted to let you all know and let the public know that we will be having our historic preservation celebration event this weekend. We're very excited to be back in person. We haven't had one in person since before the pandemic, so it's the Plumber Park Through the Years celebration. It's in conjunction with the Doors Open celebration that the state is, the state historic preservation is working on, and it will be at Plumber's Park, Plumber Park. And starting in Fiesta Hall, there will be some remarks, some refreshments, and a chance to look around Fiesta Hall and Great Hall Long Hall, which were recently designated, as you know. So please come out if you have a chance. That is Saturday from 11 to 3 at Plumber Park. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the acting chair, acting director, sir? Nope. Great, thank you. So item eight, consent calendar, we have none, which brings us to our public hearings. Item nine, a commission. The commission has been asked to consider a request to subdivide an existing airspace lot into three airspace parcels for the property located at 8430 Sunset Boulevard. And I understand, oh, Doug, you're going to be doing. Oh, thanks. Are we having issues with the staff report? Okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my presentation to project onto the screen behind you. Let's see. Did I plug in with the HDMI cable, right? Oh, you try to have it here, here, possibly sharing it through. Okay. Then how do I get my presentation onto?
Well, getting the presentation in order, maybe we can do commissioner disclosures. Do we have any disclosures? No? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I did have a brief conversation with the applicant's representative, and we discussed items contained in the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Matos?
I had conversations with member of the public regarding items in the staff report and with the applicant regarding matters contained in the staff report.
Thank you.
... Good evening, Chair Carvalero. I'm Doug Doolittle. Can you, Doug? Department, and the proposal before you is the approval of a parcel map for the subdivision of an existing airspace lot into three airspace parcels to accommodate the ownership structure of the existing hotel building and digital signage components. The approximately 1.97 acre subject site currently consists of three airspace lots that are improved with a mixed-use development project that contains a 149-room hotel, currently doing business as Pendry West Hollywood. And in addition to that, there is retail, entertainment, and restaurant uses.
So sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let everyone know that the YouTube livestream did not start properly. It will be uploaded at the, after the meeting, and it is, we are streaming live on all of our other outlets, and we are legally good to go with all of our meeting locations. So I'm going to let Doug continue again. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just repeat what I stated last. The approximately 1.97 acre subject site consists of three airspace lots that are improved with a mixed-use development containing a 149-room hotel known as Pendry West Hollywood, and its associated retail, entertainment, and restaurant uses that primarily front Sunset Boulevard. And there, the mixed-use project also includes 45 residential units that front Olive Drive, and the project also includes 410 subterranean parking spaces. So the request is for the subdivision of an existing approximately 40,000-square-foot airspace lot, which, you know, measured at grade, into basically three airspace parcels to accommodate the ownership structure and its existing uses that include approximately 38,700 square feet for the hotel building, 1,128 square feet for the digital LED signage on the east, west, and north facades of the building, and finally, a 66 square feet for the signage equipment room. And those elements are illustrated in Exhibit C. So if I can back up, so this particular image shows the entire project site, and the parcel that is requesting these airspace subdivision is this parcel right here, which primarily fronts Sunset Boulevard. So the other two parcels that compose the project contains the dwelling units for the So this is just a photograph, you know, illustrating or showing the existing LED digital signage components that are on the building. And this image is a three-dimensional view. Since this is an airspace subdivision, you can see the location of parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three. So the request for the approval of a parcel map to subdivide this existing airspace lot into three airspace parcels to accommodate the ownership structure of an existing hotel building and digital signage components complies with the Sunset specific plan and all of the applicable property development standards and requirements under the city's zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. The airspace subdivision will also not be detrimental to the public welfare and will not impede implementation of the general plan, nor the purpose and intent of the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, Staff recommends approval of the subdivision permit as conditioned in the attached draft resolution. So this concludes my brief presentation, and I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have any questions for Staff at the moment? Nope. Nope, okay. So will the applicant want to make a presentation? Are they prepared to make a presentation tonight?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. Oops. Not sure if this is on. There we go. Good evening, commissioners. DJ Moore of Latham &amp; Watkins, resident of the city of Los Angeles. Here on behalf of the applicant Sunset subsidiary, we're just pulling up our presentation right now. Also here with me this evening, I believe, are representatives from SOMAS who prepared the map in case there are technical questions, just getting into the nitty-gritty components of the, of the details. We want to thank Staff for their presentation. We are fully supportive of the recommendation, even the staff report and the draft resolution. Following Doug's presentation, I just wanted to focus a few minutes on some additional background items for the proposed subdivision of this existing parcel that contains the Pendry Hotel Building. Next slide, please. The entire Pendry site consists, as Doug mentioned, of a large mixed-use development that the city approved back in 2010. It includes a hotel building, a residential condominium building to the south, subterranean parking, and other commercial and retail uses. For purposes of tonight, we're only concerned about the area that's boxed in red on the slide. That's the part of the site that contains the hotel building. This is part of an existing legal airspace parcel that contains both the hotel and the project's digital signage component. Next slide, please. Tonight, we're asking for your approval to subdivide that existing legal parcel into three separate airspace lots, as shown on this slide. One is the primary lot for the hotel building that will remain and the associated parking structure. One lot is carved out here for the LED digital signage on the east, west, and north facades of the building. And then one lot is on the interior of the building. That's for the signage equipment room. We're not seeking to make any physical changes to the building. We are not seeking to make any physical changes to the property. We're not seeking any changes to the sign operations. This is really just a paper land use change with the city and the county to create a legal parcel for the digital signage. Next slide, please. The purpose of this, and the reason the applicant is seeking a subdivision, is so that it can enter into a ground lease for the digital signage with a third-party advertising company. This is allowed by the development agreement and the covenant that are recorded against title that the city council approved to regulate signage on the property back in 2010. Accordingly, the subdivision just accomplishes what the city council allowed when they approved this project in 2010. Ground leases, just so you know, provide really important protections to lessees, such as if you're, if the building were to ever go into bankruptcy, the lessee would be protected. And so they're easier to finance than a license agreement, which is the kind of agreement, long-term agreement you could enter into now in the absence of a legal parcel. The California Subdivision Map Act essentially provides that only a ground, a legal parcel can be ground leased, so we're just being consistent with what the Subdivision Map Act requires, and therefore, we're here tonight requesting that this legal parcel be created. The two airspace lots, as I mentioned, for the digital signage and the electric control room will also have easements across the hotel property associated with them, so that the signage company will be able to come in and access for maintenance and repair and things like that. In 2023, most new development projects that are going forward in the city that have signage include separate parcels for the signage. I'm working on a few of them right now. And so in 2010, when this project was approved, that wasn't exactly the state of, state of play, and so we're sort of just really bringing this into the evolution of how signage has evolved over the years since this project was approved. Next slide. So consistent with Staff's recommendation, we're respectfully requesting that the commission approve the parcel map as recommended and adopt Staff's proposed sequa findings. We in SOMAS are here to answer any questions you may have, and we, of course, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the applicant at this moment? Nope? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll open our public speaker portion of this public hearing. David, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do, Chair. Our first public speaker in, we're taking council chambers. If there is anybody on the Zoom platform, star nine for me, and we'll give you three minutes. We're starting chambers. Kyle, you will have three minutes. State your name and city of residence.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Hi, Kyle Hatze, I'm going to try to move this up a little bit. Kyle Hatze, I'm a City of West Hollywood resident. Very proud, actually. I just moved my mom here from Maryland, two, two West Hollywood, five-minute walk from me, so I've been a pretty happy resident, enjoying everything about the neighborhood. For a little bit of background, one of the things that drew me to West Hollywood in the first place is it's a place with active development. It's a community that supports new housing. It's a community that supports bike initiatives. We have a wonderful park. I have a two-year-old daughter, and hope to have more soon, and ultimately, I'm kind of almost here on her behalf for the reason that I'll state to you guys now. So I actually live directly behind the Pendry. For what it's worth, love the hotel, love the staff that works there. I'm a frequent user of their facilities, including the Sun Rose, which is their live music venue. I'm really excited that the council, among other bodies in Los Angeles, have really supported bringing the arts and keeping the arts on Sunset, particularly music, given its history. And so we're a patron of all of those activities. I'd say the biggest problem to date has been that billboard, and the issue with it is it is extraordinarily bright. It is extraordinarily bright. extraordinarily bright. It is extraordinarily bright at all hours of the night. It's distracting when you drive to and from Sunset. I would even argue potentially dangerous to drivers driving along that road. And the colors that they use at night tend to be extremely bright. They tend to be white colors, red colors, things that illuminate more. And the problem with that is, residents in my building, including my daughter, her bedroom faces that billboard, and it's extremely difficult because it pours light into the rooms in our building. And it's not just our building, it's other buildings along that street. And again, we're big supporters of the Pendry. I'm not going to sit here and tell you I oppose all billboards and all that. That's not what I'm here to say. My concern is, by approving this subdivision in this lot, what we're doing is supporting leasing to a third party that's going to run and operate that billboard, potentially securing it for the benefit of lenders as well, who may have a say in how that building operates and how that, what advertisements are posted on that billboard. And my concern is, the billboard today, which is already a problem for sleeping, which is already a problem for nighttime activities for everyone in my building, that it's going to get worse. If we have a new operator, we don't know what rules they need to adhere to when they post advertisements and lease that billboard space from the building. And it's already been a distraction for residents. I'm nervous and worried it's going to get worse. For what it's worth, I expect the Pendry would be good partners in potentially figuring out a solution. The problem is, is residents, we don't know what rules they actually have to adhere to in terms of the amount of light they can bring into our bedrooms at night. And that means we have no idea how to police it, how we can enforce it, and how we can make sure that from here on out, it doesn't get worse. So my question to the council, because the information we received wasn't totally sufficient or accurate or complete, is what guarantees do we have as residents that when they lease this building out to another operator, that it doesn't get worse? So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. And Chair, that is our last public speaker.
All right.
For this item.
Okay, so the applicant has five minutes to address any public comments.
Thank you, Chair. Again, DJ Moore, Latham and Watkins. So I appreciate Mr. Hatzer's comments, and want to certainly offer that the Pendry is happy to meet with him. We've actually, since 2019, only had two complaints registered with the hotel about the signage operation, both of which we have worked, one we resolved, one we're actually in the process of working through and resolving. The Pendry, of course, wants to be a good neighbor. We have adhered to all of the signage standards that the city has imposed through the covenant that's recorded against the property. In fact, we did a lighting study in 2021 that showed that we were operating actually substantially below what the thresholds that the city sets for digital signage, which I believe is 300 Candela's at night. We were operating at 150. But if there are case-by-case situations where we have neighbors who are concerned about light in their building, we're absolutely happy to meet with them and work through those issues. But again, we are complying fully with the requirements that the city has imposed on us. And again, I don't believe that any complaints have formally been registered with the city as well. At least, we haven't been made aware of any of them. But again, Mr. Hatzer, I'll be happy to meet with you after this and put him in touch with the right people to see if we can alleviate that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to close the public speaker portion of the public hearing, and we'll move on to deliberation. Do we have a commissioner who wants to start the discussion? Or do we have any comments? No? Commissioner Matos?
Sure. I mean, to my understanding, and I would ask staff to also affirm this, these types of airspace agreements are fairly routine for billboards that we see today. For whatever reason, this did not have the airspace agreement that was adopted in 2010 or subsequent addendums. So I see this as a fairly routine exercise that's in line with a lot of what we're seeing in current agreements for the airspace. So I would move that we continue, or that we advance the item and would go with staff's recommendation to approve the airspace subdivision.
I'll second that.
I have a question for staff, actually, if that's okay to open that. In light of the concerns expressed, I just wanted to confirm that any changes in lease ownership or billboard ownership would have to, of course, confirm to the same development agreement that's in place for this? So they would not be able to change any of that without an approval?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
There's a covenant reported on the property that runs with the land, and it has provisions about transfers, about light standards, and all those things.
So there could be no physical or light standard change with the change of ownership or lessorship?
Correct. It's all in the covenant.
And the other thing is, maybe we could, or you could let the public know what, there seems to be some confusion, if there is an issue with light trespass and so forth, who they should contact at the city about that. There seems to be some confusion. So thank you. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Copeland? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. I'm aligned with the other commissioners. I'm generally in support of this, and I'm happy to move it forward as recommended by staff. I think the digital billboard and signage standards are pretty clear, and that any lack of adherence to that would be, you know, enforced by a code compliance, and have, hope that we can have good faith the Pendry will be a good neighbor. So I'm in support of the item.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Gregor?
I just want to say I also support the item. Obviously, I am concerned with the public speaker's comments today, and I'm glad to hear the Pendry is willing to meet with their neighbor and talk about these issues. And I would encourage the gentleman also to speak to city staff if he has concerns that the city can assist with. But generally, I support the item.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Gregor? Vice Chair?
Not unlike the other comments I, from our commission, I share the concern, you know, that we're hearing today about light levels and light trespass. And I do hope that the city can work with any complaints as they arise, and that we can make sure residents know how to flag those as well. However, it seems like what we're deciding on right now is kind of separate from all of that issue, and it's just really about the reorganization of how this signage is set up. Nothing's physically changing. So unfortunately, I don't know, you know, those seem to be different items, so I don't know if it's something we can address right here, right now, or I don't feel like we can. So I'm inclined to move this forward, too. But I do share and appreciate the concerns and hope we can work through those, or the city can work through them.
Great. Thank you. I'm also in support of this item. I think the lighting restrictions and guidelines are pretty clear-cut. I also, earlier in the conversation with Doug Vu, we talked about any, this, we're not approving any changes to the billboard, and any future modifications or additional billboards will have to go through the normal process. So this is pretty straightforward. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Matos?
Yeah, and just for the good of the order, Chair, I think that this has already been done. But I just request, on behalf of the commission, that staff maybe follow up with the public commenters so that they're aware of the city rules. But yeah, other than that, I would move the item.
Second?
I second.
And the motion passes unanimously, approving Resolution Number PC 231529 as presented. We do have an appeal process for this item. The Resolution of Planning Commission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Thank you, David. So that brings us to Item 9B. The commission has been asked to consider a request to demolish a commercial building and construct a new seven-story mixed-use development containing 110 dwelling units above ground floor commercial space at 8025 Santa Monica Boulevard. And Mr. Doug Vu, I think you're going to do the staff report?
Good evening again, Commissioners. I'm still Doug Vu, and the project planner for the proposal before you, which is a request to demolish an existing two-story commercial building and construct an approximately 82,510-square-foot, seven-story, mixed-use development containing 110 dwelling units above approximately 3,795 square feet of ground floor commercial space over a two-level subterranean garage with 115 parking spaces. The proposed project includes 15 units of onsite affordable housing and utilizes a density bonus and concessions. So the project site is located on the north side of Santa Monica Boulevard, near the northeast corner of Crescent Heights Boulevard, behind the curved slip lane. And the site has a total area of 22,005 square feet. The property contains approximately 160 feet of frontage along Santa Monica Boulevard, and is developed with a two-story, 4,000-square-foot commercial bank branch building that was originally constructed in 1961 and was mostly, most recently occupied the Bank of America, until it permanently closed during the pandemic in 2021. So before I continue with the description of the project components, I would like to confirm that among the public comments that were received by the city was a letter from the firm of Lozoo Droid that was received yesterday. And that letter raised some concerns regarding the city's determination to use a categorical exemption for the proposed project under Class 32, which is for infill projects. And I just would like to state into the record that, in response to this letter, the city prepared a memorandum today. And I believe the commissioners have a copy of it. There are copies on the table in the back of the room. And I also believe that our commission secretary has posted this letter, or this memorandum, to the city's website. And, but basically, just in summation, the letter raised questions regarding the project's air quality impacts, as well as, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the city's use of a Class 32 exemption. And it alleged that there were unusual circumstances that would preclude the city from using that exemption. But as you can basically read or see in the letter, the city attorney has opined and determined that the project does qualify for a Class 32 exemption, and that the findings that were made in the draft resolution are valid for the project. So, moving on to a description of the project's elements, the proposed seven-story building would contain 3,795 square feet of commercial space, the residential lobby, mechanical, storage, and laundry rooms, and the only garage entrance with 13 parking spaces at the ground floor. The 110 dwelling units at the second through seventh floors consist of eight micro-studio units, 34 micro-one-bedroom units, 60 one-bedroom units, and eight two-bedroom units. Of these 110 units, 95 are market rate, and 15 will be permanently affordable. That include 11 units for very low income and four units for moderate-income households, which will be distributed throughout the building. A central courtyard is located on the second floor and is open to the sky to provide the adjacent units with access to light and improve cross-ventilation. A majority of the dwelling units facing the building's exterior contain a balcony or deck, and 58 of these units provide a total of 5,206 square feet of code-complying private open space. The aforementioned central courtyard at the second floor and the shared areas at the sixth, seventh, and rooftop levels will provide a total of 14,575 square feet of common open space, which includes a swimming pool on the roof. There are also common amenity rooms on the upper floors and laundry rooms on both the first and seventh floors. The two-level basement garage will provide 107 parking spaces for building residents, and the project also includes a small pet relief area that's located on the ground floor and behind the building at the northwest corner of the property. So the project has a residential base count of 74 units and will comply with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance by providing 15 permanently affordable units that consist of one micro-studio, five micro-one-bedroom, eight one-bedroom, and one two-bedroom units that will be distributed throughout the building. As I mentioned earlier, 11 of these units will be allocated to very low-income households and four units to moderate-income households. So by providing these affordable units at these income levels, the project is eligible for a density bonus of 50% and three concessions under the state density bonus law. So just for the record, the project is actually going to take advantage of a density bonus that's equivalent to 49%. So not the full 50%, but 49%. And the three concessions that the project is eligible for include, the first concession is a request for two additional stories that will add 19 feet to the subject site's permitted 55 feet for a total height of 74 feet. So the addition of these two stories is necessary to provide the building envelope area for 22 dwelling units and amenity rooms, and will increase the project's market rate dwellings from 59 to 95 units. The second concession is the elimination of the 35-foot height limit for the rear 25-foot depth of the proposed building that is located to the residential zoning district, which is required for projects within the mixed-use incentive overlay zone. So the elimination of this height limit adjacent to the residential properties on Norton Avenue would allow the project's fourth and fifth floors to be constructed along the same rear building plane as the floors below it, with a 10-foot, 4-inch setback. And then, on the sixth and seventh floors, it would be constructed with a 30-foot setback, which would be necessary to provide the floor area for 21 dwelling units. The third and last concession is a reduction of the minimum 15-foot separation between commercial and residential structures at the rear of the property to 10 feet, 4 inches. And this only would be adjacent to the non-conforming apartment building at 810 Norton Avenue, which is actually constructed to the property line. So this 4-foot, 8-inch reduction of this separation would, again, provide floor area needed to construct two dwelling units and allow the rear building wall to be constructed along a single plane. The city's Design Review Subcommittee reviewed this project on June 22nd and made specific revisions or recommendations regarding the project to improve the livability of the micro-units as well as all of the units within the building. So staff has coordinated, you know, with the applicant to address these recommendations that result in the project before you this evening. But at this time, I'd like to ask the city architect, Rick Abramson, to elaborate a little bit more about the project's building and site design.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Rick Abramson, city architect. I manage the Urban Design and Architecture Studio. I think this is a very important project for the city. Looking ahead is a harbinger of what may come. And I think there's a lot of things here that are really important for the conversation tonight, and it's really about how we can accommodate greater density and intensity in a thoughtful way on our commercial arteries. And this is somewhat of an unusual project in that we've seen smaller units in the past. I think the closest comp would be at Sierra Bonita, where there was not, maybe quite as tall building, but it was smaller one-bedroom units around a courtyard. But I think what makes this unique is that it's proposing conventional units mixed with micro-living. And the micro-living is a really important typology for the city that we really don't have right now. And there's, it's a lifestyle that, from an architecture/urban design perspective, is very much a gap that is worth filling. So I think this is really an important project to start looking forward to. As Doug mentioned, there's a mix of conventional one- and two-bedroom units, as well as these micro-units. As it went through the process, the applicant and design team has been very open to comments, feedback, made number of changes to sort of refine and tighten the design as it went along. In particular, several In particular, separating the commercial and the residential parking, I think, was an important move so that the ground floor is all commercial parking, there's a security gate, and then the residential is subgrade. So, that addresses a lot of concerns we've seen on other mixed-use projects, and I really applaud them for that. Also, there were comments about, with this type of intensity, how does laundry get handled? We have to anticipate that there could be upwards of 130, 140 people living here. So, that's a good number that needs to be thought through with those kind of facilities. So, they've distributed them both at the rooftop and down below so that there's different opportunities for engagement. I think the project is very successful with its open space. There's been a lot of thought and consideration that's gone into not only the private open space for the units, but also varying intimate and more social or extrovert-related spaces. And I think with this kind of intensity as we go forward, that's a really important thing that we need to think about, is that not everybody is the same makeup, not everybody wants the same lifestyle. And so, a building that accommodates different points of engagement from a conversation for two versus, you know, an activity for 20, I think, is really important, and they were very successful on that. I think at the design review stage, they might be getting a subcommittee report, but there were several suggestions brought forward, and I think where one of the biggest concerns was in the micro-one-bedroom and micro-studio units, that when you decrease in size, in order for them to work well, they have to be designed exceptionally well because there is no room to go out and buy dressers and amours and other furniture to make up for that. So, I think the applicant's going to address that in their presentation of how they're looking at the basics of living that were brought up at design review, things like linen and utility storage and food pantry and other everyday types of storage that needs to be integrated very thoughtfully, very carefully into these micro-living situations. And I think, lastly, the ground floor plane, there was also a lot of discussion about the commercial frontage because typically in our commercial frontage, especially on the east side, we have consecutive storefronts that line the Boulevard. So, you have this cadence of different changing retail or service-oriented businesses. And because there's only one point of access, it has to have a driveway on Santa Monica. There's no other choice. They have removed a second driveway, which is great. But I think there was an encouragement to try to activate the remaining frontage as much as possible. There are a couple of side yards and egress elements that sort of break it up a little bit, but I think the applicant has been thoughtful in creating a kind of residential lounge-type of space along the frontage to help with that pedestrian activity. But I think that's always the challenge with a long frontage in a mixed-use project, to make sure that we don't lose that rhythm and cadence of active pedestrian life. So, that was part of the conversation as well. But, you know, overall, I think the applicants have done a really remarkable job at this scale of density and intensity of being thoughtful, having design-based solutions, and looking forward to their comments and happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at the moment? Commissioner Copeland?
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions and maybe later there could be more. But right now, currently, we have no regulations or design standards in place for micro-units. Is that correct?
Yes, that's in the works.
Okay, but we don't have anything right now?
Correct.
I guess I do have a question. It appears to be that in the egress leaving the property that traffic can only exit the property and go north or head west. The median is still there. So, if that were something that were to be conditioned or to be done, that would be the responsibility of the applicant, not the city, is that correct? To provide that, like reduce the median or so that there could be some other exit to the property?
Correct, correct, yes. The city engineer has reviewed the project and included some conditions that would address the issue of egress, traffic queuing, and cars attempting to make a left-hand turn from Santa Monica Boulevard onto southbound Crescent Heights.
Okay, because right now, I mean, that would be something that would be their responsibility anyway if that were to be conditioned. The other thing is in the design renderings, looking at this one now, perhaps it's just the way that it looks to me, but there's a concrete wall there, and as the car is exiting, it appears to be high enough that it would be blocking the view from the left. But we do have that visibility triangle at 28 inches, is that correct? So, that would be implemented. It's just the way the photo looks, probably, maybe just to me, but...
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. We do have a visibility triangle. At that point, the exit path for this two-way entry-exit is further west, so we apply the triangle at where they're exiting.
Right.
So, there is, you know, we went back and looked at that. There is no visibility blockage there for that wall because it's far enough away.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are all my questions right now. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Nope? Great. Vice Chair Lombardi is going to do a design review subcommittee summary for us.
Thank you, Chair. So, during the design review subcommittee meeting, you think overall, we were really pleased with the design of this project and found it to be quite successful. I think in particular, the implementation of the south elevation. So, overall, it was very well-received. We did have a healthy discussion about micro-units and studio units and what those mean and the design of it. And city architect Rick Abramson also flagged some of that just a few minutes ago during the staff presentation. You know, just to point out a few more specific things that we looked at, there were questions about parking and separation of the residential and commercial zones, which has been addressed since our review. Some minor things like ADA, striping, and that's all been picked up as well. We did ask about sun studies in the courtyard. I still have some questions relating to that, but maybe the applicant's presentation will help answer some of that. And then, there were some discussions about the east and west sides of the building and how to make the units successful in terms of their views and pop-out conditions, just suggestions that we had made. We also talked about the dog run and making that functional. There's been a relocation of that you'll see that's closer to Crescent Heights. We also talked about laundry facilities, and so there's been some revisions implemented in the plans for that as well, adding additional locations so that they're more dispersed throughout the project. And then, some discussions about the roof, sustainability measures, maximizing green landscape on the pathways. Maybe we'll see more with the presentation as it gets into landscape today to discuss. And then, some discussion also about refinements to the north elevation. There have been, I think, some changes on Level 2. And then, we also asked about proximity to adjacent buildings. There is a little bit more clarity in the new plans that we have on that that were provided for this meeting. And let's see what else I have on my notes. We did talk a little bit about the southeast corner of the facade and potential refinements there, and that was hopefully a good recap on our discussions.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair Lombardi. Disclosures, do I have any commissioner disclosures? Commissioner Copeland?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I did speak with several area residents about the project and just matters contained in the staff report and did make several visits to the site. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, I mean, I travel past the site almost every day, and I did have a brief conversation with the applicant's representative regarding matters in the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you. I did have a very brief conversation with the applicant's representative, and we discussed items contained in the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ratos?
Yes, I spoke with members of the public, residents of the city, about items contained in the staff report, and I also met with the applicant's representative, and we discussed matters contained in the staff report.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Grabois? Nope? Vice Chair Lombardi?
I could not help but visit the site since it's easy to pass it, so I did pay some attention to that, somewhat intentional, I guess. And then, I had a very, very brief discussion with the applicant's representative, only discussed matters in the staff report, and as I noted, it was quite brief.
Great, thank you. I also had a discussion with the applicant's representative about items in the staff report. So, that brings us to, we're opening the public speaker portion of this public hearing. David, do we have any public speakers for this item?
Did you want to take the applicant's?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, sorry. The applicant's application or presentation?
Chair, members of the commission, my name is Jeff Seymour, and this is moving all over the place. Happy to be here tonight. Seymour Consulting Group resides in Westlake Village. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Vu and staff for their continued input. This has been a long and very detailed discussion as to where we're going and what our design is moving towards. Mr. Vu did an outstanding job designing, giving you a summary of the design of the project. I do want to reemphasize the micro-units. We have of 110 units, we have 42 micro-units. We believe this is really the first time in West Hollywood where we're really looking towards what makes a micro-unit work in a community or city like West Hollywood. What I'm going to do at this point is to give this floor over to Christian Robert, who is office-entitled architects. We're going to go through the presentation. We really do want you to see what we've done, especially with the micro-units. And then, Alex Masachi, who is the owner and developer of the project, and myself will be ready to answer any questions you may have. So, thank you.
Christian Robert, resident of Los Angeles, co-founder and principal of office-entitled architects. I want to thank staff and the commissioners for the continuously great input. We've been doing work in the city now since 2013, and it continues to be a pleasure. A pleasure because the quality of the input, the collaborative nature that both includes the members of the public. So, thank you for that to start. I'm going to walk you briefly through the design. I'm going to highlight some of the changes that we made in response to your well-received comments. So, initially, we always start with sort of like a written exercise to frame the goal of the project. I think, as we mentioned, we're very delighted to implement some of the research in different housing types that we've been doing throughout our office, and the micro-units are certainly a great opportunity to solve some of the problems, yet when carefully designed, really address some of the challenges that we have today. So, the, I would say, the outstanding sort of design feature is really this sort of like whale and screen that we use as a mediator between the scale and activity of the city and the residence' private space. I think for us, it's one of the main challenges, how to incorporate a high density in a city like West Hollywood. So, the screens act both as a light filter, act as transparency both from inside to outside, but also act as a shield and privacy for both the residents and the public looking inward. And it also is a great chance to really variate the very tight volume and building envelope. So, what you see, the building uses both a combination of movable and fixed screens, their expanded metal mesh, as well as floor plan angulations that sort of like references them, sort of like a basket weave pattern. Next slide. So, like the data sheet as you, for your more detailed study, next slide. The site area, Santa Monica and Crescent Heights, a sort of like very prominent site in the city. We have a few projects going on in Santa Monica Boulevard, and the curving lane, as identified before, is sort of a key kind of challenge. Next slide. The existing condition, the Bank of America building, they're sort of like to the west, and they're sort of like very small, single-story bungalow to the right, to the east. And you see the neighbor building on the far north there. That building is actually constructed, encroaching on our property, on the property line by about a foot. Next slide. In the south, the gas station and a series of one- to two-story buildings. Next slide. Sort of like a series of operation, really illustrating the design process, starting with the buildable envelope, adding the rear step back, although we are eliminating the 35-foot setback requirement or we're asking for a concession respectfully. We do want to do create a larger setback that is 30 feet, and it starts a level higher than required. We have an additional side setback to both allow for the screen language as well as for fire department access on the ground floor. And then, the courtyard, right? I think one of the key features that we're blessed with in this climate is the use of natural ventilation, and the courtyards both act as a social and climate activator. Number four, the roof terrace, so like stepping that height down on the southwest corner, so like the most prominent one, but also very well oriented towards views and solar wise, really creates this cascading effect and turns a single or two separate-story outdoor spaces into one, where the seventh floor merges onto the roof level without having to take enclosed stairs. So, it is, so like larger bleachers stairs, sort of like very key design feature. If you do remember our 1250 Fairfax project, when you do sit on the top of these bleachers, it really gives you an incredible view of the city because your guardrail is much lower. Then, a series of additional cuts, eroding the mass first, and so like additional operations. Next slide. Next slide. So, the courtyard, so like a larger diagram here highlighting the environmental features, so A, the natural ventilation, the rated rainwater capture and a drywall, and then the intensively vegetated roof on the rooftop. Next slide, please. So, walking through the floor plans now, excuse me, on the ground floor, sort of like ample street frontage, and you see, if you look closely, we pushed in the storefronts a little further, kind of like picked up the insulation from the upper floor and buried sort of like continuity of facade into smaller storefront sections. There is still the driveway and the transformer that remains to the east. Next slide. Starting at the lower floor plans, the residential storage you see on the bottom right is provided throughout the parking levels, and a large portion of it is consolidated on this floor on the southeast corner, providing additional security. Next slide. The same thing on the P1 level. Next slide. On the ground level, as mentioned before, there's sort of like a larger retail parking on the west, so sort of like a good, I would say, third or quarter of the space is occupied for the lobby so that the, so like living room for the residents is also has frontage. You do realize, please note that the pet relief area that we incorporated, per your comments, we slid that further to the west on the top area and extended the tall wall, fronting it, preventing or protecting the neighbors from noise, from our four-legged friends. Next slide. Moving up Level 2, the residential building to the north, as I said before, encroaches off the property line, but we removed the balconies in the, so like two units on the north side to provide relief and open space between the structures and mitigating some of the privacy concerns. The courtyard is generously proportioned, in our opinion, providing significant natural light at adjacent units. If you do look in the city's courtyard housing standards, a 20-foot by 20-foot square is what the required minimum is, which we have dodged here, and so the clear dimensions are... what the required minimum is, which we have dashed here, and so the clear dimensions are about 40 by 32 feet, 30 by 38 feet roughly. The clear dimensions all the way to the unit is about 43 by 35 feet. Next slide. And then on the upper floor, you see the typical units. The unit facing to the east of the courtyard, that previously designed review subcommittee members, you remember, we had these two sort of like very small micro units that we eliminated and combined, following your comments and input, into a more generous micro one-bedroom unit, which I'll go in further detail further. Next slide. Level six, this is the first significant setback, as I mentioned before, along the north property line. We're using this area in addition to the mitigating overall scale for many unique outdoor amenity spaces, and you see the variety and hierarchy of outdoor spaces throughout the project on a later slide. Next slide. The seventh floor, so the floor before the rooftop, you see the cascading stair on the left, a generously outdoor common area space that is tied into the common amenity area here. And the main reason for this sort of like erosion is to reduce the overall massing. We feel it's important to step back the buildings on the upper floor to at least reduce the perceived building from that angle. And as I said, the step back provides a quality outdoor space with direct connection to the rooftop. Next floor plan. Here, we have some additional revisions that we incorporated for the landscape design. We rearranged those areas into smaller, more intimate areas that are separated by a landscape, landscaping, and are connected by a, so like walk system. You also see a small pool with incredible views to the north. Again, this is setback 30 feet from the northern property line to give neighbors some privacy.
And you have one minute remaining.
Next slide. And here you see again the overview over the different outdoor spaces on throughout the project, and levels one, two, six, seven, and the roof. Next slide. The sections that we had discussed previously, the trees and planter wells, the larger overview. Next slide. Next slide. The unit types, you see the unit type on the second from the left, the micro bedroom unit that we had revised. Next slide. And then a more detailed elevation showing all the built-in cabinetry that Hohelia and Mr. Lombardi had previously referenced too. So a lot of built-in area that allows the residents to move in without having to worry about furnishing them. Next slide. The exterior renderings, so showing, and you can keep going through those, series of the, basically the variegated angles on the floor plans, mixed with the playful orchestration of the screens. Next slide. Sort of a larger area, lighting plan at night, we basically have a, so very rarely subtle wall lights in the balconies. Next slide. More of a daylight view, the same view. Next slide. The southwestern view, you see how the building, the setback in the back changes facade to further subdivide this, the building massing design. Next slide. South elevation, as we had discussed, you notice that the top floor is setback at the roof level, the community room. Next slide. And the aerial, showing the large open space on the roof and the ground area. Next slide. The north elevation, you can't see the removal of the balconies right here, but a series of revisions here, increasing the privacy for the neighbors on the north. Next slide. And then on the ground level, we did sort of like allocate modulation and additional, sort of like canopy at more pedestrian height level, brings the scale down, paired with textured concrete. Next slide. And then internal courtyard view, you see the clear store windows, the side lights on the doors, the landscaping and the varying edge of the courtyard balconies. Next slide. The overall material palette, using raked and state stucco lighter floor aims, the expanded meshel. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Gogor?
So, the micro units, the micro units are pretty small. Do you have experience designing buildings with studios that are 283 square feet, or micro one-bedrooms that are 391 square feet? And what has that experience been?
So I think our experience with that started actually about 10 years ago when we started doing hotels. And it's very much like a hotel room, in effect, size-wise, an average hotel room's 350 square feet. So, but in addition, I think there, there's a larger discussions that making the hotel room a more smarter version of itself when it comes to apartments. So there's Murphy beds, and there's really kind of like clever ways to design these. We have two projects that are currently in construction. The client himself was oftentimes the, so like initial decision-maker when we proposed those decisions, currently has also a project that is just finished, that we actually toured with some of the commission members or staff earlier in the process.
Great. How is, how have those units been from a marketing perspective?
Yeah, maybe I invite Alex Masachi here to make a few comments. Just sort of like recall, when I first moved to Hollywood, I lived on the Long Prey and Highland and June Street, in a small room, and I pretty much had like three feet to move over of my bed. We did have a common area, so the, really the impact that we're seeing now leads to really more well-designed generous amenity areas as well.
Thank you, Christian. Hi, Alex Masachi, the developer behind this project. To address your question, we did take staff, or the majority of them, to a project that actually just got built on Woolshire and La Jolla that employed a similar strategy. We think the appeal, and it's been marketing very well, actually, but is that we're offering a turnkey product. As Rick said, it's sort of designed like a jewel box. Every inch and nook is very thoughtfully designed from an interior and architecture perspective. It's fully furnished, all of these units, so the eight micro studios, as well as the one-beds, come with a full FFNE package, bed, panelized walls for storage, and any other common appliances you would find in a regular-sized unit. So, and that coupled with the fact that all the utilities, as well as other amenities like Wi-Fi are all bundled into the rent that the tenant is paying, provides very ease of access. So basically, you could just come in with your small duffel bag or suitcase and live in the unit. Nothing has to be thought out by the end user, because everything was thought out by our team, and it's being perceived very well across both LA and the US.
Great, thank you. I know in the staff report, there was some comment that there was some concern that there would be high turnover with these micro units, because they're so small. I guess, what has your experience been with turnover? Is there an average length of time that these types of units are rented?
Well, I think we'll obviously adhere to the condition of approval, so we will not market it for less than 12 months. But I think that's also a question of, we see a lot of projects in the city, one of which actually Christian worked on, the Harland, where they offer the tenant, as they're touring, the option to furnish the unit for them, so it can be more turnkey, like one of these units that we're proposing. They do like that. It could sometimes lead to them not being as sticky, but then again, we think the value proposition here is the fact that, from a gross rent perspective, they're paying 30% to 50% less than anywhere in the immediate vicinity for a new product to be in this part of West Hollywood, which is highly desirable, so we don't think that they're going to necessarily want to give that up, regardless of how occupied it is throughout the calendar year.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Commissioner Matos?
Thank you, Chair. Quick question, and I don't know what the comfortability is with sharing this. Do you have a ballpark on what the market for the micro units looks like, as far as pricing?
At this time, no, but it is, like I said, roughly 30% to 50% lower than the same category of a standard-sized unit.
Okay, so we would anticipate that these would be significantly more affordable than a traditional 755 square feet one-bedroom unit?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Copeland?
Hi. I have a question about, with regard, again, to the micro units. Do we have dimensions and number counts for things like the counters, pantry, linen, utility closets?
Doug, do you want to go to that slide? That has the blown-up version.
Do we have numbers as far as the dimensions of what they would be?
Well, there's a few different unit types. We, after talking with Rick and staff during DRS, we got rid of the smallest one, but the dimensions and like the number of like the millwork, that hasn't been hashed out, but you could see in this enlarged floor plan, some of the concept elevations. So, basically, every inch of the wall will be panelized. We're not going to really, there's no room for just leaving drywall that's painted, because of all of the like concern around storage and amenities for these tenants. I would say at this point, the exact number of fixtures has not been thought out, because it wasn't our main concern, it's just thinking overall how to make these more livable and desirable. But this slide should give you a sense of what the end product will look like.
Okay. Is there a, with, say, the micro one-bedroom, this might even be something staff has to weigh in on, but is there a maximum capacity as far as tenancy for like a micro one-bedroom?
I think also you had a question about defining these types of units, so the reality too with this project is, the definition of a habitable unit in the West Hollywood code is in like the mid-to-high 200-square-foot number, so this project could have been proposed as just a mix of market and affordable project that has a variety of typologies that don't include micros, because all our units are actually bigger than the minimum that's already defined. We actually wanted to pioneer something, so that stuff like the subsequent item that you'll see, which I guess is addressing micros, gets addressed in the city going forward. But it's not necessarily that small. The micro one-bed, which on a net leasable square footage averages 450 square feet, is actually, like Christian said, a better thought-out hotel room, and it's bigger than the industry average. And the good thing about these units relative to the micro studios is, it's going to have its own living space and bedroom that does not need to employ a Murphy bed that closes during the day and acts as, seconds as a living room. There is ample space to provide everything, including the full-size kitchen appliances. One other interesting thing is, we found through our research with competitors, is that tenants actually really like full-size kitchens in a micro setting versus the micro appliances, so that's something that we're going to employ here. Just the fact that they could have a full-size kitchen is very meaningful. So we're not going to have two burners, it'll be at least four, stuff like that.
Okay, but we don't really have a definitive idea of whether this micro one-bedroom would have one person, two people, there's not a restriction either with your company or with, as far as what the occupancy could be of these units?
Yeah, I'll say from our perspective, I don't know if there is a restriction, but the studio, yeah, I mean, it could be one person or a couple, I would imagine, but not more than two.
Okay, and I understand the, he mentioned earlier that the balconies were removed on the north side, which is...
Oh, correct. So, can you go to that slide? Maybe the L2 floor plan? So yeah, to address the non-conforming building, which is just over 10 feet away, we actually removed two of the micro one-beds balconies to address any privacy concerns between the two projects, right there.
Are there balconies across the north side at all, or just those two have been removed, or are all of them on that side?
Just those have been removed, because those are closest to the building that's encroaching past our property line, and then after that, this height, you actually can't see into the building anymore.
Okay. I'm assuming that the rooftop capacity, activities, and hours would be regulated by management, or would that be by code? That's something for...
I think both. We would have set hours for the project typically till 10:00 PM, but, you know, we're obviously already mandated by certain like noise ordinances and stuff.
Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Nope. Vice Chair Lombardi?
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions, although I do want to point out one thing, I think when we were looking at those micro unit drawings that were just up, it was showing two-burner, not four-burner appliances, but I understand your intent is maybe to do otherwise, but that kind of caught me. I just wanted to ask, because there's been some reference to hotel during this discussion. I think micro units are a really interesting concept, and there's opportunity for a lot of success here, but what I'm wondering is, what are the lease terms on some of these other properties, or your other property? And what does that mean for a project in West Hollywood with a one-year lease term? Like, how do you see that as viable? Just trying to understand your business approach and how you see it as a success for West Hollywood.
I think some of the competitors do offer less than 12 months. I think it goes anywhere from three to 12 months, but I do think the value proposition, again, is the significantly lower rent and the fact that the unit doesn't have to be furnished, and it's in a very highly desirable and walkable part of town. Even just based on like focus groups, we've had people who are like, oh yeah, I definitely rent that. It just is sort of, it's a very ease of access, livable, and it feeds into the whole socio-economic trends that we're experiencing in the city now. I don't think the 12-month lease will be a problem.
When you had, when you had those focus groups, did you discuss the, you know, minimum one-year lease and pull that, that feedback as well from...
We didn't discuss the minimum one-year lease, but they didn't, they didn't have a desire to lease it on a short-term basis.
Okay. And then, you know, I do have one question on, well, maybe one or two questions on the design, and just as I was going through these plans, I know that we got a memo at one point that noted a few changes, and there was reference to the alcove, I believe, at the Egress section of the south elevation, which is something that came up during design review. Am I missing that change, or I guess I wasn't understanding, because it didn't, I didn't see the change on the drawings?
Sorry, which, which thing are you referencing?
Alcoves along the south facade at the Egress corridor have been removed. Is that in reference to the new shifting of the building facade on the ground floor, or something else? I wasn't understanding what the change was or how that was addressed.
Can you go to the ground floor plan, please? So the, the change references the removal of, there was sort of like a larger alcove around the exit corridor that was, that was removed. So I don't have the previous drawings with me right now, but we can follow up with that.
Okay, right, right at that Egress door where your hand is now. Yeah, I wasn't, okay. I guess I see a slight change? Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then, I guess the other question that I had when I was looking at the materials again, have you thought about the shade of white that you'd be utilizing? I know you've just kind of generically called out white, which can be pretty reflective in California sun.
Yeah, it's not a full true white, so we want to sort of like mitigate, it's going to be more like a light gray.
Okay, have you started to sample those?
No, not yet.
Okay. So more of a light gray color. So an off-white? Okay.
Yeah, you do have, you do have only a few areas that are really full, full white, so the majority is sort of like in shade or perforated.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Matos?
Thank, thank you, Chair. Just a quick question out of curiosity. The staff report references that there would be 13 spaces on the ground floor. Is there an intended use for that beyond residential parking, such as loading, commercial loading, or ride-share, or anything to that nature?
So all, all spaces on the ground floor? So all, all spaces on the ground floor are for commercial, so the division between residential parking and commercial parking happens at the ramp. So there's a privacy gate that prevents you from, prevents commercial tenants to access the residential parking.
Perfect, so this would facilitate all onsite loading and moving in and out of the units and things of that nature that would be in that zone?
That, that's the goal, yeah, as much as it's required.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all our questions, so now we'll open, thank you. Now we'll open the public speaker portion of our public hearing. David, do we have any public speakers?
Chair, we do. We have a couple of speakers here in council chambers, and if there is anybody on the Zoom platform, star nine for me, or use the raised-hand feature, and we'll give you three minutes. We're starting the council chambers. Our first speaker will be Michael Cook. Michael, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence, please.
Michael Cook, most potent grave and reverend seniors and ladies. I am untutored in these matters, so that's why I address you Shakespearean-wise. I'm questioning something that I don't think was addressed, which was the height of the building proposed, will it not block completely the sun from Norton Avenue? Yes, that's something to consider. I have lived in West Hollywood for eleven years peacefully, I love my neighbors, I love the people, and we're going to lose sun, that's something. The building that's crossed the way from me on Norton that was built recently, the Empire on Norton, that's what it was, took a long time to build. How long do you propose that this building would be? How long do you think it'll take to build?
Yeah, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, he's not able to respond.
Oh, I see, I see. Anyway, that's going to be some time, there's no question about it, seven, seven stories. I personally don't care for the design, I, perhaps because I'm of another era, I noticed up on the screen was the phrase, pardon me while I switch glasses, sensitivity to the surrounding neighborhood. I, I don't see that myself, unfortunately. There was a man, I think you will be familiar with, who said, "We try and put into that structure or house a sense of unity of the altogether that makes it part of its site. If the thing is successful, the architect's effort, you can't imagine that structure, house, anywhere than right where it is. It's part of its environment, and it graces its environment rather than disgraces it." And that man was a man named Wright, I think you may know who he might be, Frank Lloyd. I, I've said what I've said. I hope you consider if there could be any changes that would lower the height of the building. Of course, they've made their plans, I appreciate, I understand the way things go. Anyway, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Alex Masachi, followed by Andrew Solomon. Alex? Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. Andrew, you have three minutes. State your name and city of residence, please.
Good evening, I'll be brief. My name's Andrew Solomon, I live here in West Hollywood. I am the co-chair of Abundant Housing West Hollywood Chapter, and just wanted to briefly urge you all to vote in favor of this project. We support it, we know that we need to add four thousand housing units to the city by 2029. Hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen, they're being proposed today. It's, doesn't get us there tomorrow, but it, it's a step in the right direction, particularly, I think, the inclusion of using these micro units to give a more array of choices and options to align to people's income and what they can afford to spend on housing. I think this is a great step in the right direction. It's, it's much better than a vacant bike parking lot that sits there now. Looking forward to seeing this corner activated one day with tons of new West Hollywood residents and local customers living there. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I do have two citizens' position slips. Thomas Doe is choosing not to speak, but he wants you to know that he opposes staff's recommendation on this project. He's a West Hollywood resident. And then Kyle Hattis, West Hollywood, just questions, will there be a common area bike parking, particularly for the micro units, to support bike adoption amongst tenants? And then we'll move over to the Zoom platform.
Hello, Commission, we do have two speakers on the Zoom. Please, you have three minutes to state your comments, and then please state your name and city of residence, and then remember to star six to unmute, and we have Marjan first.
Good evening, Chair, Mr. Vu, and honorable members of the Planning Commission. My name is Marjan Abubuo. On behalf of SAFER, the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, and its members who live and work in and around VHO, with the time I have, I'd like to speak on the eighty-twenty-five Santa Monica Project. SAFER respectfully requests the Planning Commission to not approve the project at this time under the Class Thirty-two exemption, and to instead direct city staff to prepare an initial study pursuant to CEQA. As a preliminary matter, this project was proposed as a one hundred and fifteen-unit mixed-use development, but is now being proposed here as a one hundred and ten-unit project. While a difference of five units might not seem too significant, this unexpected redesign precludes the applicant of having to otherwise prepare an air quality impact study pursuant to the city's housing album. Unfortunately, SAFER was relying on the analysis to review the potentially significant air quality impacts that would result, but did not know of this carve-out until only a week ago, when the city released its staff report. And given the long, long weekend, the timing arguably robs us of the opportunity to adequately review the project, what some has noted as the largest apartment complex project proposed in VHO in decades. This ties into the letter we submitted, per CEQA, a Class Thirty-two exemption cannot be invoked if the project will result in air quality impacts. Mr. Vu explains that an air quality study is not required because the development parameters are at the screening criteria for which any construction emissions will not exceed state-mandated thresholds. A closer inspection of the Housing Elements EIR reveals that the screening criteria was designed for residential projects. However, this project is not just a residential, but a mixed-use development, one that, as the commissioners have noted, adds close to four thousand square feet of commercial space. As such, not even a redesign should preclude the city from requiring the applicant to provide an air quality study. Additionally, this project is right at the cutoff of the EIR's development parameters, and so adding the unaccounted commercial space will reasonably place anticipated project emissions above threshold. Independent expert analyses that we included in our letter supports this, and to note, the Housing Elements EIR is based off of a model that typically does not analyze demolition and subterranean garage construction impacts, which are both proposed for this project. In closing, the city cannot proceed with this project without analyzing its air quality impacts. Plus, given how commercial components of proposed projects tend to generally have higher emissions than their residential counterparts, the city must perform additional environmental analysis. SAFER respectfully asks the Planning Commission to not approve the project tonight under the Class Thirty-two exemption, and to proceed instead with additional review as required by CEQA. Thank you.
And Chair, that is our last public speaker.
Thank you. So that brings, I'll close the public speaker portion of the public hearing, and we can start Commissioner deliberation. Does anybody want to go first? Commissioner?
Chair.
Real quickly, the rebuttal.
A rebuttal? Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, rebuttal.
I'll be brief, Chair, members of the Commission. First and foremost, we're always willing to speak to our neighbors. We have an open door. If there are issues regarding or relating to the design or the issue as we move forward, are we talking eighteen months for construction? Eighteen months for construction? So we're talking, just to respond to the question, we have, construction's going to be around twenty-four months. You know, I, I wish, give you a little bit of a personal, got a couple of minutes, personal view of things. So I, I grew up on Harper, and my dad bought his house seventy years ago. So when I was a kid and growing, you know, going to Rosewood Avenue School, the housing that we had seen were duplexes and fourplexes, and it worked. But when you're dealing with the world that we live in now, and you want to increase the, the housing stock here in West Hollywood, and you want to provide quality housing to those of all income levels, and you want to include the amenities that you need in order to increase that stock, this building checks all the boxes. And we hope that as we continue your deliberations, you'll consider that, and you'll support our request to move forward with entitlements for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, before you move, close the public hearing, or public comment, we do have one more speaker on the Zoom platform, we'd like to give an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, Jobi Hart, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name, city of residence, and remember to star six to unmute yourselves.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, yes, hi, sorry, the signals are a little bit crazy. Yeah, I'm a resident of Park Wellington here in West Hollywood, and have been for the last four years, and to me, this project is the, is the perfect residency that we, we need to have, it's crying out for new buildings. This is such a great city, and to have such an epic design is, is what we need. We're, we're looking to the future, we're looking for modernization, even a Park Wellington, which is an incredible place to live, it just feels a little bit dated right now. So, you know, really, really want you guys to look at the future here and, and what we can do in West Hollywood, rather than having these older buildings that are just not perfect for what the residents need, to look for these kind of designers and the builders and the developers that are trying to really elevate the experience of the city would be something really fantastic to do. I mean, ultimately, to have the commercial space at the bottom of it, it's what we need, it's fantastic. I know everyone thinks, everyone was there, oh, we shouldn't do this, we shouldn't do that, but this is exactly what West Hollywood needs. It's exactly what Los Angeles needs, we, we've got to get involved, we've got to, we've got to push it through, we've got to do four buildings like this. This is the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Chair, that is our last public speaker.
Great, David, thank you. So now I will close the public speaker portion of the public hearing, and we'll start Commissioner deliberation. Commissioner Edwards?
Oh, I just quickly want to make an additional disclosure, that I happen to be on the Board of Abundant Housing, the C4 side of it, and I want to be clear that I have no role in when decisions are made to support projects. In fact, I was kind of surprised to see that Abundant Housing took a position, and I just want to be clear that in my role as a Commissioner, that I can make a fair, like hear all the issues, hear both sides, and make a fair response.
Thank you. Commissioner Matos?
Thank you, Chair. First off, I want to start by thanking every single person that wrote in, and I want to thank everyone that came to speak in the room with us here today. We do read your public comments, I read every single one, even the ones that are submitted in the eleventh hour, a couple hours before the meeting, so thank you for participating. When you look at this project objectively, it is a good project. We're seeing housing that's being created at an affordable level. If you read the staff report and even go into the resolution, you can see the types of units that are going to be used for the inclusionary affordable units. You know, we're looking at moderate-income micro-studio, four very low-income micro-one bedrooms, one moderate-income micro-bedroom, one bedroom, and then eight very low-income one-bedrooms, one moderate-income one-bedroom, and one moderate-income two-bedroom. What I'm trying to show is that this encompasses every single floor plan for the inclusionary units. That is so incredibly valuable, and I think when we look at the integration of these new micro-units into our housing stock, it's going to be incredibly valuable for affordability. As we heard from the presenter, we're looking at thirty to fifty percent reduction from a typical one-bedroom unit when we start looking at the micro-sized units. And then just a personal story I'd offer is, when I first moved to West Hollywood, my apartment was five hundred and ninety-five square feet, and probably ninety-five square feet of that was the closet because it was huge, and I was very happy there. It served its purpose, it was affordable, and it helped me be able to come and live in this city. So, you know, going back to the project, they're providing parking when state law currently requires zero parking, and it probably is more parking that exists there today. They're incorporating off-site loading zones and integration of ride-sharing and looking into those options, and there's fifteen units of affordable housing, and the rest of the units are going to be pretty affordable comparatively to the market. So I think when we look at, and it's also on a major transit corridor, on a commercially-zoned area, so when we look at this project objectively, I don't see how we could not support it, and I plan on supporting this item tonight, and I'm excited to see it come to our city.
Thank you. Commissioner Grunkwirth?
I too, I too support this project. I think there's a lot to like about it. I don't love it, there's a lot to like about it. I love the fact it's a hundred and ten new units to the city. I'm a big advocate for building housing, both market rate and affordable. I love the fact there are fifteen affordable units. I do like the diversity of unit sizes, which I think is terrific, but I will get to my biggest concern, which is the micro-units. I definitely think we, as a city, should support experimentation with respect to the size of units. That being said, I do have concerns, and this, again, I support the project, a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-square-foot unit doesn't seem livable to me. I do see that that could be a great option for somebody who's going to be in the city for short term, maybe six months or a year, but if we as a city want to encourage long-term residents, if we want to encourage people to move here and make West Hollywood their home, I don't think the building of micro-units is going to do that. Even the one-bedrooms are three hundred and ninety-one square feet, the micro-one-bedrooms, none of that is going to foster long-term residents. It's not going to encourage people to move here and fall in love with the city and want to spend their lives here. So again, I, I support, I support the diversity of the unit sizes, I support experimenting with micro-units, but I have to say, I, I'm very skeptical of them, and I'm not sure the city should be encouraging them. I don't think we should be encouraging them just for the sake of expanding the number of units in the city, because I, I believe, I fear that we're building substandard housing if it's going to be this small. And again, we're not going to encourage people taking up long-term residence in this building or in our city. My, my second comment, parking, I, they are building more parking than is required by state law. I get that, that's not the basis to oppose the project, but I've expressed my concern in the past about any project that doesn't have at least one parking space for every unit. I am concerned that people will have cars, and they'll need to put their cars somewhere. I'm afraid we're, by not having enough parking in this and many of the other new buildings in the city, we're creating a bigger parking problem for the city. That's just my, that's, that's just my two cents about that, but, but again, overall, I, I support the project. But again, overall, I support the project, I do have those concerns, and I do think it's categorically exempt, so I don't have any problem affirming that in tonight's resolution. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Copeland.
Thank you, Chair. I echo some of the concerns that Commissioner Greg Ward just spoke of. There are a lot of components in this design that I really like. I like the outdoor space, I like the common space, and there are, again, many things that I think are wonderful and I really like. My concern, again, is with the micro-units. We don't have any design standards or regulations in place right now as far as size, occupancy, how many cabinets, how many square feet of counter space. It's okay to show a rendering and say we're going to have this and that, but if there's no specificity to hold anything to, I think we should be having that before we can approve something like... So I would rather see this come back with that specificity in it. And again, the, you know, in a less attractive alternative, there would have to be a rather long, intensive list of conditions, I think, that would need to be met with those specifics before it went to plan check. Because this is new, I think we have the opportunity and the responsibility to get it right. Needs to be livable, it needs to be habitable. It's great to have additional housing options that maybe will be a little less... Some can be a little less expensive, but it needs to be livable in order for someone to stay there 12 months or long-term. And if you're... We don't even have an occupancy idea yet, if there's going to be one person or if there could be two. There are too many things that I think we don't have in place yet or specifics in this proposal. An average studio is 500 to 600 square feet. So we're not talking about reducing something by 20%, 25%, we're talking about 50%, smaller than the size of a three-star hotel room. So every inch of that space, you know, it has to be utilized, but you have to have... If you don't have a pantry, you don't have the linen closet, you don't have the clothes closet, you don't have utility for each person, enough counter space, then if you have to eat all of your meals out, or if you have to purchase a storage space to put your belongings, you're not really saving any money, and you're not going to be happy very long. It's more like an extended-stay hotel room, which is not what we're trying to do here. So I do have concerns about the space, the number of square footage and how much smaller it is. We're talking about less than half of a standard size. But if we had all those design specifics in place, it might be easier to say, well, this might be livable. Right now, I don't see that we have that information, and I think it's a great marketing strategy, and it's, you know, it could be a good thing. But again, we have the responsibility, this is new, we have the responsibility to do this properly and make it habitable and livable. And I just don't feel comfortable that we have all that information that we need to... For me to feel comfortable that that's what this is. So again, I would suggest a continuance or a lot of conditions to go into this. Those are my thoughts. But again, and I do, you know, there are a lot of positive things that I really do like about it, and there are also additional concerns that have been expressed by the public, which I think are important and do need to be addressed as well, but I'm going to start with this. So thank you for listening, appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Sure, thank you. I think, as Commissioner Lombardi summarized earlier, we had a really productive conversation with the community and with the applicant at the Design Review Subcommittee meeting. Really appreciate the applicant sending over the list of changes, I think that was really helpful. I took notes, but this actually seemed more thorough than those. You see, I've been writing the whole... I think I have like nine pages of notes already from this meeting tonight. So I really appreciate that the laundry room was introduced on the ground in the seventh floor. I know that was something that we had talked at length about. I was happy to see that, I think it really improves the experience for residents. The pet relief area has also been moved to the west side, northwest side of the building. I also was really happy to see that. Looks like, you know, most of the changes that we talked about, you know, wanting to see changes for, you know, being made, have been made, so very appreciative of that. I'm very excited about the introduction of these kinds of units into the city's housing stock. It's, you know, the first time we've had anything like this. I hear Commissioner Copeland's comments about, you know, wanting there to be design standards in place, but that could take 20 years, with all due respect to staff. I just... These things take a very, very long time to get ironed out. I think we've seen this time and again with things like neighborhood standards, and what I think I would rather see, especially in the spirit of moving, you know, our housing inventory forward in the face of all of the, you know, housing crisis that we hear about every day and face every day, is building the units and then using them as a way to understand more about what does and does not work. I... To me, I think we can start with the units and start with the building of the project and use that to inform the policy that we make rather than the other way around. I think, for me especially, given the circumstances that we're living in with housing requirements and RENA numbers and all of the housing that needs to be built for us to house everybody who is currently unhoused in our community and beyond, I would rather see the units be built at this time. I'm in support of the project, I'm excited about it, and open to discussion on any of the items that I mentioned, but those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards, do you have any comments? No. Thank you. Vice Chair Lombardi.
Sure, I have a few comments. So there seems to be a lot of support, but also concern regarding this project. You know, I did get to see this as I went through the Design Review Subcommittee, and I'm encouraged by the fact that there were, you know, it was receptive in terms of our feedback, and there were adjustments to the design made, which gives me confidence that there may continue to be some refinements to the design as it moves forward. So in that sense, I feel good about the project, and I think that it's, you know, architecturally could be quite successful. There are some units that I have concerns with, which is only magnified by the fact that, you know, we have small micro-units on the project. There are some units that maybe are less successful in terms of ventilation or privacy as well off of the courtyard. There has been an effort to make some adjustments to the design and expand some of the units as well, replacing some of those studios with one-bedrooms, so I appreciate that effort. With that being said, you know, there... I do feel like there's a little bit of an experimental factor, at least within the city of West Hollywood and this project and micro-units, so there may be some learnings from this. However, we have seen some other projects that have unique housing configurations and smaller units as well, and this one seems to be much better set up to make the best of it when you look at the common spaces that are being provided and the thought to the design that's being considered, and even the evolution we've seen between Design Review and what was presented today. So those are maybe some positives that I see. I'm not really sure if I, from an environmental standpoint, see how this project would be any different than any other project of its size, and it seems that, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not sure what the environmental concern would be. I've, you know, read through the memo from staff and generally agree that, you know, that's something that, you know, is just the fact of building and construction. I guess I don't really have environmental concerns, other than, yes, it's construction, we're building something. At the end of the day, I guess when looking at this project, looking at the facts and then also the limitations that we have as a commission, I would be inclined to approve the project and see it move forward. I do have concerns as well, but I think that, all being said, we have a very competent design team and ownership team, and I do hope that they can rise to the challenges to make sure that this project is a success for the city of West Hollywood, and in particular, some of the concerns that we addressed with, you know, are the housing that we're looking for and rental restrictions that we have, which are one-year rental minimums. So just keep all of that in mind, and I do hope this project is a success, and I hope that we can see a lot of positive out of it.
Thank you. So my few... I won't add any... I'll add a few comments. I'm quite excited about this project, and I think the Alken has done a really great job responding to our Design Review comments, and they've been very interactive with city staff, and it shows in the quality of the project. Recently, first, I don't think we're really running an experiment here. It's like, Eitoshi Abi, when he was Dean of Graduate School of Architecture at UCLA, said that the future of Los Angeles is really... Should be... We should be looking to Tokyo and Japan for how we should set up our housing in Los Angeles in the future. And in Tokyo, a family of four live in 400 square feet for many periods, many years, if not, you know, a child's entire upbringing. So I don't necessarily think that we're doing an experiment. It's been proven successful in other cultures and other parts of the world, and I'm excited to see it happen here. It requires a change of attitude about our approach to space and how much space a particular person needs to function and live. And as Americans, we've been spoiled with a lot of space, and it has ballooned into the global warming issue that we are now stuck and need to face. I recently read a report that New York City residents have a 70% smaller carbon footprint than anybody else in the United States, and that comes from density. And this project reflects, starts to reflect that type of density that will reduce our carbon footprint and creates a multitude of apartment options that the micro-units in particular will allow somebody younger to move into the city, have an affordable apartment for a year or two years and three years, save up some money, and then maybe move to a larger condo or, you know, somewhere else in the neighborhood. I think that's valuable to the fabric of our city, just from a generational point of view and having multiple generations living in the city, and it just gives options. I'm in full support of this project. I think it's the right place in the city for this project. Yes, it's seven stories tall, but that corner, there's a lot of space with the park across the street and the low-rise buildings across the street. You have a really... You're going to have a really beautiful vantage point as you're driving east. And yeah, I'm in support of this project. So I think we... Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move the item for approval. Second.
And?
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who is second? Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Matos, seconded by Commissioner Edwards. And the motion passes, six eyes, noting Commissioner Copeland voting no. The resolution... But we do have an appeal process. This is for Resolution Number PC231529, as presented. The resolution the Planning Commission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the City Council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the City Clerk's Office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The City Clerk's Office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Thank you. Thank you. So that takes us to Item 9C. We were supposed to review Shared Housing Design Standards and Definitions ZTA, but it has been continued to a date uncertain. Item 9D, Micro-Units and Senior Congregate Care ZTA, has also been continued to a date uncertain. And that then leads us to new business, we have none. Item 11, unfinished business, we have none. Item 12, excluded consent calendar, we have none. And Item 13, items from the staff, the planning managers, update please.
Good evening once again. Thank you. I will give an update on our upcoming agendas and our upcoming Subcommittee agendas. So our next meeting will be on September 21st, that is, in two weeks. We'll be hearing a conditional use permit request at 8465 Melrose Avenue, as well as have a report on the Steering Committee for the City Playhouse and a general plan consistency finding for that project also. That's at 8325 Santa Monica Boulevard, across the street from City Hall. And we will hear a Zone Text Amendment on landscaping and tree canopy standards. We will, on October 5th, which is the following meeting, we will be hearing a billboard item for the Roxy and the Rainbow, which is at 9,009 to 9,015 Sunset Boulevard. Currently, that's the only item on that agenda.
Great, thank you.
I would also like to let you know that I'm actively trying to find a spot for the discussion regarding continuance. I know one of our public speakers brought that up again, and I understand that we do want to talk about that soon, and so we're looking for a spot to put that on the agenda when we have a full commission here and not too heavy of an agenda, so that we have a good amount of time and energy to spend talking about that as needed. For the Subcommittees coming up, Design Review Subcommittee, we have on October 12th, 1238 to 1244 North Larrabee. It's our first Design Review Subcommittee meeting we've had in a little while, so that's a six-story, 24-unit apartment building. And then we're planning to convene the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee on November 9th, and we would hear 8410 Sunset Boulevard, which is the Sphere. It is... Obviously, it's a billboard project. Upcoming on the Long Range Planning Project Subcommittee, we do not have any scheduled items at this time. And that is my update, and I'm here for any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Just to note, I am not going to be present for the October 12th Design Review Subcommittee meeting, unfortunately, I will be out of town on the other coast, so it's something work-related, so be on your own.
Thank you. Okay. David, do we have any public comments?
Chair, we are all clear.
Great. Any items from the commissioners? No? Okay, so I will adjourn our meeting to our next regularly-scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which will happen on Thursday, September 21st, 2023, at 6:30 here in Council Chambers. Thank you.